Welcome, everybody. I am going to call to order the special call meeting of the Columbia Heights Board of Education and the City Council. For all of those that are able, if you could, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Item number two are welcome and introductions. We'll start off by first, my name is Laurian Mueller. I'm the Vice Chair of the Columbia Heights Public School Board. Natty Severson sends her regrets. She is our chair. She's not able to be here tonight. It is senior night for her son, and so she is attending that instead. So she wishes you all well and wishes she could be here tonight. With that, is there any specifications on how we do introductions? Should we do, do you want to do the school board first and then we can do city? Right. Oh, and for a housekeeping item, thank you, Xena. If you could, try to be about six inches from the microphone when you're speaking so that it is received on the live streaming.
Hi. Good evening, Xena Stenvik, Superintendent, welcome.
I'm Laura Palmer. Welcome. Thank you so much for meeting us this evening.
Good evening, I'm Molly Lewis. Thank you again for joining us.
Hi, I'm Mary Granlin. We're very excited to have you guys here today.
Brenna Simonin, glad to be here.
I'm Alda Marcus Simil. I'm the Mayor of Columbia Heights. Thank you for having us.
Hi, I'm Kelly Bourgeois, the Columbia Heights City Manager, and thank you for hosting and having us tonight.
Hi, I'm Connie Biscusson. Thanks for hosting this event tonight. Thank you for meeting.
John Mershen, then City Council, thank you for having us here tonight. Been a long time for waiting to have something like this happen, so thank you very much.
Nick Nowitzki, City Council President, thanks for having us and I'm happy to be here.
Katie Jacobs, City Council, glad to be here and glad to have the second annual combination meeting. It's exciting.
Great, thank you all. And as you said, it's just wonderful, I think, for us to be able to get together at the school board and the City Council and to share what's happening in our worlds and to just have some camaraderie. Really important for leadership in Columbia Heights to get together. So as Katie said, this is our second one, and I know we had to pause there for a little bit, but we're back and hopefully we can continue, continue to do these as we work together. So, thank you all. We do have some presentations tonight. Our first, probably we'd like to welcome our guests from the city to share some updates and presentation on city projects.
Thank you, Vice Chair. If you don't mind, I'm going to just introduce our staff and then we have a few people that are going to do presentations. First of all, we have our new city clerk. She hasn't been with us all that long, but she's jumped in with both feet, Sarah Ion. And then in the back of the room, excuse me, we have our communications coordinator, Ben Sandell. And then the three that you'll be hearing from, our library director, Renee Doherty, our recreation director, Keith Winchittle, and our community development director, Aaron Sherpick. And Aaron, if we can start with you to do the presentation on our community projects, that would be great.
Sure. All right, well, thank you all for having us this evening. Just to have a brief update on significant development projects ongoing or in the pipeline for the city. And I'll try to share my screen here. We should know our way around Zoom. Oh, it says it's disabled. So, go into settings here and try and, uh, that's audio. Cool. All right. There we go. Thank you. Okay. Then I need to probably maximize that. Everything's a little busy. Thanks for your patience. So, first, our project, New City Hall and Mixed Use Project at 40th and Central. We presented on this the last time we were together, but just a quick up update. So, hold on, trying to advance slides. There we go. So, 266 market rate apartments, new 21,000 square foot city hall, 3,500 square foot cafe space, well underway. If you've driven down Central Avenue anytime in the last year, you've probably recognized the progress. We're scheduled to start leasing apartments right now, tentatively in September, with a move-in by the city in the new city hall space in October or November of this year. So, very excited to get into this new home and get that project finished. Another project that's moved its way through the planning process, partially anyways, is a joint effort between developer, Reuter Walton, and SECA Food Shelf and Thrift Store. So there's a vacant development parcel located directly behind the city's Police and Fire Department or Public Safety Campus, kind of shown on the map here with the red star. And on that site, this affordable housing project that you see on your screen, it's 62 units. Apartment community has been approved by the city's planning commission and City Council, and we're just working through kind of the final stages of preparing the land to be sold to Reuter Walton so that they could start the affordable housing project in around June of this year. And SECA, I don't have a rendering of their building to show at this time, but we're expecting them to come through the city's planning process for site plan approvals in the coming months and that they would be lagging the affordable housing project just by a few months and finishing in around the same time. It's about a year-long construction process for, for the apartments and short, slightly shorter duration for SECA, but an exciting project that was recently awarded a significant grant from the Metropolitan Council of just over $1.2 million to assist with a variety of needs on the site, stormwater infrastructure, all the way through utility relocate, soil corrections, grading, public art, community engagement, a pretty broad spectrum, but the biggest component being stormwater. Infrastructure that will take a surface ponding issue that's in the area that's plagued that vicinity of the city for many years and move it into an underground storage system. The city received $750,000 in grant funding for that component. So, excited to see this get off the ground. So, the next project is the redevelopment of what most people probably know or call the Hy-Vee site. So, the Rainbow Foods building, which currently has Ace Hardware and a Dollar Store and was slated to be a Hy-Vee for a while, has been purchased by the city's development partner for the site, Alatus Development, who is also the developer on the city's new city hall project. So, Hy-Vee no longer is going to be going into this space, as many people probably know. And right now, what we are contemplating is a full redevelopment of the site rather than a reuse of the existing building. So, tear everything down, and the renderings that I'm going to show are conceptual. I just want to put that in front of everything that we're talking about. They're just kind of the first cut iteration of a site plan or layout for what is being envisioned on the site. So here's a plan view. There's three component parts, commercial and housing on the front. So bringing the buildings up to Central Avenue where previously the strip mall is sunken back into the site with a sea of parking, we would eliminate all of that surface parking and have a configuration that's consistent with the 40th and Central. Vertical mixed use, all the parking underground, a few, few layers, a basement, and then a main floor or street level parking, all structured and all covered. Right now, the, the units are estimated between 450 to 600 housing units with between 40,000 to 80,000 on the high end of commercial and retail space underneath along Central. Our developer partner is currently spending their time trying to engage grocery partner as the anchor tenant and a variety of other medium range and smaller tenants, but really want to secure a grocery partner for the site. That being an important attribute that the community was interested in, and we think we can still be successful in doing that. So, if they're able to get a grocery tenant, then we'll move into the planning and engagement process, kind of using that as the, the starting point. City park in the middle of the site, it's 13 acres total. So, if you guys are familiar with the, the site as it stands, the single-family homes that you see on the site plan are on top of what is a large pond. So, that surface pond that's back behind the building that's kind of unsightly and, and difficult to maintain would be turned into a residential neighborhood, and then we'd move the, the stormwater capacity that's needed in that area into other areas of the site, probably with a combination of surface ponding and a lot of undergrounding of, of that system. So, very excited to get this project underway. It's, you know, a spinoff of what we have going on at 40th and Central, and right now we anticipate that this would move through the city approval process for land use entitlements towards the end of this year with a spring of 2023 groundbreaking. And that is all that I have to share this evening.
Any questions?
Mary. I'm not sure if this, I don't think that this is something you might be able to answer.
Yeah.
But just thinking about this, these different housing developments, would they then, any children in those, would they feed into both North Park School for Innovation and also Valley View?
We'll have to look at the maps.
Yeah, that's, yeah. I wasn't actually expecting a full answer, but just something, thank you. Yeah. Otherwise, it looks like a very wonderful and exciting project, so.
Thank you. All right.
Thanks, Erin. And next, we have Renee Doherty, our library director. Renee?
I'd like to share some of the activities we've been doing at the library this year. I would like to thank you for the opportunity to receive some of the 21st Century grant funding. We are using that this year for a program we're doing on Tuesday afternoons called Codes Hour of Code. We have some instructors from CodeSavvy who are working with a group of teens to explore robotics and coding and app building and gaming and all kinds of stuff, and so far, so good. It's going very, very well. I also want to let you know that we have recently hired a new adult, a new youth services librarian. Her name is Eliza Pope. She comes to us from St. Paul Public Library where she worked with their Create Tech Lab with teens and technology. So she has been here for a little over a month and is hopping right into programming. We have restarted live in-person programming at the library this fall, so coinciding with the 2021-2022 school year. We're excited about that. We're starting slowly, asking people to register for programs, but we have a lot on the calendar. And then the final bit of news I'd like to share with you is that thanks to the City Council, we are going to go overdue, fine free, starting March 1st. So a way to make sure that we get books into the hands of the district students and the people in our community.
Excellent, thank you. Any questions?
All right, thank you. And last but not least, Keith Winchittle to talk about our recreation programming.
And Keith, I know that you have a loud voice, but could you make sure you speak into the microphone? That'd be great. Thank you.
Let me know if it's okay.
Perfect.
Okay, good evening. Thank you for having me here tonight. I think I know most of you, and most of you had kids in our program before, so it's good to see all of you. I've been with the city as recreation director for about 25 years now. Within that 25 years, most of those years, we've been in a grant opportunity with the school district of some way, shape, or form with either a federal grant or a state grant. So with that, those grant funds have been able to provide many different programs throughout the community. We've always had, the Recreation Department has always had a great relationship with the school district and, and with community ed specifically. We've worked hand in hand with community ed to be able to offer great programs to the youth in the community. And I'm going to just talk about a few examples. I broke my reading glasses on the way over here, so I'm going to hopefully read this. So our summer park, summer rec park programs have been very successful throughout many years. Some of the grant funding does cover some of those programs that meet the age criteria. We have ran them the last couple summers and had pretty good numbers both summers, even with COVID. We've really operated under strict guidelines and, and really was, we're very fortunate that we didn't have many kids get sick. The second program that we offer is the Puppet Wagon. You've probably seen it through, throughout the parks. We have fourth through eighth graders do puppet programs, create the programs, and then go from park to park to put it on for the neighborhoods, which has been very successful. Another program we offer is the Youth Theater Program. We have two different age groups, eighth through 12th grade and third through eighth grade. They both have a great performance at the end of the summer, so it's really worked out very well to, to get a lot of kids involved in the theater program. The grant funding has also allowed us to do drawing workshops with young rembrants. We're currently doing some of that. We've done some in the past. This program offers youth to develop drawing skills and refine existing skills. During COVID, we've offered take-home kits and a couple virtual classes. We've had the Works Museum where they made a mini motor, Cinco de Mayo where they had kits to take home that create a piñata and learn about the culture. We had holiday kits with science themed, with ornament decorating and activity books. And then, and with those kits, we gave out over 150 kits this last year. We've also had some encore trips. We just went to Camp Tanaduga, Camp Tanaduna, excuse me, where the youth learned about compass navigation and winter shelter building. We went to Stages Theater and saw the Elf Musical. Science Explorers class where they're, explore different science topics using hands-on experiments. Next month, we're going to Silverwood to learn about plants and animals, tap a maple tree, and learn about coal rozing, which I had to learn about myself. That's a process where you etch wood and then rub powder on it. It's a Scandinavian culture. Anyway, the Recreation Department looks forward to continue to work with the school district and, and community ed to offer great programs for the, the youth in the community. Thank you. If you have any questions, I'd, I'd be honored.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Vice Chair, just a few more updates from various staff, but that are, I think, relevant to the school board especially. We just, just received 10 applications for our new youth commission. The City Council very recently established, established the youth commission. That is established to be between seven and 20 members. So we have 10 applications. Hopefully, all 10 will be able to serve at least for this school year. And then moving forward, we'll do annual appointments to that and then hopefully be able to build that based on, we're hoping word of mouth from the current youth commission members. So, the council should be making those appointments at their meeting next week. I know we have elections coming up this year. There's always openings, and we really do want to get younger people involved in being election judges. We really, we have a very, and this isn't just for Heights, but throughout, a lot of the election judges are at that, that top end of the scale. So we want to bring in those younger people to get involved in that program. So we would love to get some student election judges from the school district involved in that. A couple other things, we're doing a community survey right now. The council has hired a, a survey company to do a telephone survey. They're calling for 400 community members, a representative population of our community based on demographics, homeownership, geographic location within the city. So trying to get a really good statistical representation from our entire community. And one of the focuses of that community survey is on our park system to see if there's support for bonding for parks improvements. We have a great capital improvement program that the Parks Commission did that covers all of our parks. So we'd really like to be able to get some funding to make those improvements. Another thing that we're doing is, we just kicked off with the architects last week, an analysis of the Mershen Hall building to see structurally how sound it is, HVAC, electrical, all of that, to see what types of improvements we can make to that building or what, what uses we can do with that moving forward. We've heard from the community just anecdotally that they would like to see a community center. We don't really know, you know, different people have different ideas of what a community center is. So once we figure out what, what Mershen Hall needs, then we'll move into a community engagement piece to that to try and figure out really what the community wants from the park system, from Mershen Hall, and move into those improvements. And then finally, I know we've had, right before COVID hit, the Circle Terrace Building was, began operations, and we were just starting to really get kicked off with programming in that building, and then the pandemic hit. So we're starting to now go back to that building and, and look at what services we can provide in there, both at the city level, but then also at the higher level, community services at the school district, at the county level, and even the state. I think the neighbors in that area are really looking for some assistance, everywhere from childcare and parenting up to what type of, just help with getting assistance to then programming on our rec side and different things that the city can do. So that's something we're kicking back off and really trying to, now that it's getting safer, it's not quite there yet, but getting safer and easier to, to bring people back to that space, how to best utilize that and make sure that the residents, especially within walking distance of that, that building can, can have benefit from it. So those are just a few extra things that we've got going on that I think are, are of interest at least to the board.
We'll move on to.
I'm sorry, Laurie. I actually do have a question this time. Sorry. The election judges, when would the applications be open for that and how would they apply?
I can address that.
Thank you.
So 16 and older, we encourage them to go to our website, and there's information about becoming an election judge, and there's my contact information as well. So we're ramping up right now, it's still February, so we're looking towards the beginning of probably the summer months when they're, you know, going into their, their break. So it's a good opportunity for them to engage in that. So we would, we'd like applications now, but we need nothing until June, July, because the primary election is in August. And then the, the main election is in November.
Thank you.
And they're paid positions. So they are, you know, wait parent commission, paid positions.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you. Great question. Any other questions? Superintendent Stenvik, you want to introduce our presentation of school?
Certainly. This evening, we've got some of our wonderful directors who will be presenting some information, both in person and hybrid version as well. So we'll, hopefully, all of our technology is working and usually it's me, I'm like, user error, right? And the technology system is just fine. So you all, who wants to come on up? And then you all can introduce yourselves. How about that?
Brian Henneken's, Director of Finance and Operations for the school district.
Good evening. John Prime, the Director of Special Ed here in Columbia Heights.
Good evening. Kristin Stunkel, Director of Community Education and Communications.
Bondo Yanwe, Executive Director of Educational Services.
Then we'll go to Lindsay.
Lindsay Bennett, HR Director.
Tara Tuckrow, Director of Teaching and Learning.
And Emily Gartner, Teaching and Learning Elementary Coordinator.
I will get the presentation shared out here. I don't know that we really aligned who is going to start, but since I'm sitting in front of the computer, I guess I'm duly elected. So our mission, Columbia Heights Public School, is creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner, all belong, all succeed. It's the way we start all of our presentations for our district and our core values of community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. So, you know, board-approved mission statement and core values that we live each and every day.
So, I guess I'm next. Perfect, thank you. So one of the updates that we wanted to provide to the city is one of the goals, thank you, one of the goals that the board sets, we do set annual goals as a board. And this year, we have a, an equity goal. And so part of our equity goals, you can see there that the board will continue to focus on growth-striving topics of equity. We had a learning session with Dr. Anthony Mohammed. It was three sessions, and the third session appeared in the, in this academic year. And we read and discussed the book, Overcoming the Achievement Gap Trap, and really implementing our learning, creating an action plan to examine our school board policies with an eye on equity. Really what the board looked at and what we learned through our conversations and teachings with Dr. Mohammed is, is how do we, as a board, work through governance and policy to provide opportunities for all of our students to succeed at a high educational standard? And so something that's really focusing on making sure that each and every one of our students is, is successful and has access to high-quality education and just the, the high achievement in our educational practices as well. We also are focusing as a board on professional development, again with our book studies and having some trainer, facilitator in to talk about an equity statement, which leads to our, our last bullet point there. Currently, our board is working on a school board equity statement, something that is unanimous for all six of us on our board, that it's integral in what we're doing to make sure that we are providing the, the focus and the balance and to provide the resources that are necessary to achieve our goals, to make sure that we fulfill our mission of all belonging and all succeeding. And so that's something that's in progress currently right now and something that we hope to get out to the public shortly. So, I don't know if any other board members want to talk about our equity update, or Superintendent Stenvik, if I missed anything. It's something all six of us are very passionate about. If you want to see some passionate meetings, come to our work sessions where we're discussing our equity statements. And truly what this is about is, is about finding and making sure that each one of our students feels valued and comfortable and confident in our, in our school system and has the tools that they need to be successful now in school and later in life.
I would just add that the work that the board is doing is directly connected to the work that the school district, the teachers, the staff are working with. And with that, our Director Tuckrow will, will talk a little bit more about that.
Great, thank you.
I'm going to pass it to Coordinator Gartner. Hello. So good evening, and thank you for having us here virtually to share some updates with you. So I will be sharing our equity update, and equity is really central to all that we do. So these are some of the updates to share with you. So one is our affinity group. So for our licensed teachers who identify as Black, Indigenous, or people of color or BIPOC, there's a group that meets regularly to discuss recruitment and retention of BIPOC staff as well as ways to support our BIPOC students and families. So that's a group that meets approximately monthly and then also shares updates with district leaders as necessary. Equity has been part of all of our professional development days this year. So on each of our four district in-service days, we have a facilitator who's meeting with each school or program and then also meeting with the principals of those schools in between to debrief and plan for the next sessions, that it's really tailored to the needs of that staff. We have equity leadership teams that are active in our schools as well as a district level equity leadership team, and they provide really crucial input to guide the equity work of the district and their schools. When we're thinking about curriculum, we're always thinking about ways to provide mirrors, windows, and sliding glass doors. So the mirrors are really those opportunities for students to see themselves in the curriculum. Windows are opportunities to see other students' perspectives, and sliding glass doors are opportunities to change. glass doors are opportunities to change our perspectives. So, always ensuring that students have those multiple perspectives in the world around them. And then, we're very excited that this semester, we launched our Introduction to Education course at Columbia Heights High School. This is a concurrent enrollment course with Century College, to support students who are interested in a career in education. And hopefully, some of them will then come back to Heights and teach. So, it's also Grow Your Own Effort. And based on current enrollment, eighty-eight percent of the students in that class are students of color, which is actually higher than our overall percentage in the district. So, very excited to offer that opportunity for our students. With that, I will pass it to Executive Director Yemboy.
Good evening. Coming out of the pandemic, as a district, we decided to really shake things up, and there came the model, Heighten Up. And it's really a commitment to equity, as you see and as you've heard. But with that, there are four components about Heighten Up that we would like to share with you tonight. And the first one is academic acceleration, because we want to make sure that our students are continuing to succeed, even though we're still in the pandemic. Mental health support is one of the areas where we've seen a lot of needs among adults and students. And then, family and community engagement, and facility upgrades. And so, with respect to family engagement, we have several programs that we offer in the district, but here, we'll speak about one program, which is called REACH, Reaching Educational Achievement in Columbia Heights. REACH is a seven-week curriculum designed to help parents to understand the school system. As we serve a diverse community, we've realized that some parents do not fully understand everything that the district offers. And so, parents in the REACH program meet once, one night per week, during a seven-week course, to learn about the Columbia Heights School District, and how it works. And at the end of the six weeks, Week Seven, all the participants are able to receive a certificate of completion at the graduation ceremony, where we honor them, and we celebrate their contribution to learning, so that they can support the children in our schools. And in addition, in our family engagement activities, each of our school has a homeschool liaison to support the families, the students, and the teachers. The homeschool liaison work with students to be an advocate or an ally, and they also help the teachers with communication back to the families. And I will pass it on to Director Tuckrow.
One thing, as we began the school year, we heard from families who were unsure about coming back in person due to COVID, due to health reasons and other concerns. So, the school district was able to get a provisional license to support an online school. So, we have Virtual Heights, and Coordinator Gartner is going to share about elementary, and then I'll share about secondary.
For our elementary Virtual Heights program, we currently have twenty-eight students enrolled who are in pre-K through grade five, and we've had over fifty-five students who have attended Virtual Heights at some point during the school year. We have a really dynamic virtual teacher, Mr. Franchello, who has really done a great job of building community with his students, even virtually, and giving them a Heights experience from home. And Director Tuckrow will tell us about the secondary Virtual Heights program.
Thank you. And our secondary actually has very similar numbers. We have about thirty-six students currently enrolled in grade six through twelve, with a couple more on their way in. And we also just hired a secondary virtual teacher, Shelley, and she's been wonderful to have on board. And we also have two teachers at the high school who are currently supporting Virtual Heights. We have same number as elementary, about fifty-five students who have attended throughout the school year. So, students have come or gone, have entered back into in-person, or students have come from in-person and entered into Virtual Heights. And students and families are still part of their homeschool communication, which is nice. So, the principals still reach out to the families, are still invited to participate in athletics and activities if they feel comfortable. They still can access the English Language, English Learner Support, special education, as well as any other mental health supports that we have in our schools. And with that, I'm going to pass it to Executive Director Yemboy, because he unmuted.
Thank you. You know, as they say, picture is worth a thousand words, just like we saw those beautiful city buildings that are gonna rise up in Columbia Heights. The Superintendent and I get the opportunity to go in and outside of schools, to see the great work that our teachers, our principals, our parents, our kitchen staff, so everybody, the work that's done, we get to see them shine. And so, the pictures that you're seeing here, on the left, it's a fifth-grade class at North Park School for Innovation. I think it was during a writing class. And on the right, for some reason, if you're ever going to pre-K for or preschool, and you're wearing a tie, kids are very interested to grab it and touch it. And so, when we go there, we have fun with kids, and we just wanted to share with you these two pictures. And the Superintendent and I always have great things to say about the schools that we see. And I will pass it on to the next person.
That would be me. So, I will start with COVID updates, which we've been living for about the last two and a half years, along with everybody else. Our district, we do have a weekly updated COVID-19 dashboard for students and staff, COVID-19 case rates, that is on our website. So, we track the number of cases we've had. We work very closely, both myself and Director Frye, with the Minnesota Department of Health, as it relates to quarantine length, close contacts, exposures, and positive cases. And then, this year, we did it last year, too, just for staff that may just need a little extra support during the pandemic, and just in school or life in general, we were able to provide through our health and wellness funding, which comes from our health insurance company, staff counseling through Lee Carlson. So, they set up some counseling times, and staff could go in, sign up for a time, and have a little session to kind of get some, just some supports to keep them going throughout the year. So, I will pass it on to Director Frye.
Thank you, Director Bennett. So, I get the opportunity to talk about some of the great partnerships we've had, specifically around our vaccine clinic. We partnered with the City of Columbia Heights in Anoka County, and we were able to serve over eleven hundred students in our community. As you can see, there's Mr. Allen as part of the fire department, giving a shot to his daughter, so, which is exciting. And we were able to do that last spring and this fall, and we continue to do that with each elementary school as well. We also offer our staff the COVID-19 vaccine last spring, and then we offer booster shots this fall as well, to just ensure their safety and to keep them up to speed with what they feel they should be doing. And so, the other piece, just around testing that we've been able to offer, is through the Department of Health and Education, the BD Veritor is a rapid antigen test, where we can determine within fifteen minutes whether a staff or student who's been in close contact is positive for COVID. So, that allows us to, allows us as well as families to determine who's got, who's positive, and then us to kind of respond in kind to make sure everybody's safe, and we're getting, we're able to respond and provide that to families. And so, those are families and students and staff, it's for students and staff who are in close contact. And the last one is, we do biweekly saliva tests for our staff, for those who are asymptomatic, who feel they may be in close contact, or they just want to make sure that they're feeling safe, and they want to check it out. So, we provide that, excuse me, every Wednesday. And so, the last piece of the COVID update that's not on there is just a shout-out to our school nurses and our health professionals here, who have been supporting our students and our staff and families. I realize they call, and they might be providing some quarantine information or close contact, but they've been, they've stepped up, and they've been a really nice, just, they've been very focused on student safety. So, it's great to have them here in our midst. And I'm going to pass it over to Director Hennickens.
So, I think everybody's pretty much aware that, you know, school systems, state, county, I mean, we've all been receiving federal COVID dollars as it relates to the pandemic. And, you know, really, the purpose for the funds that we've received are directly related to expenses caused by COVID-19 pandemic and learning loss. And we've received money going back to March 2020, when this all started, and the current funds that we have are valid through 2024. And so, we're currently expending those funds. Some of them have already expired, and we've already spent. Some of those funds expire this year yet, some of them expire next year, some of them expire the year after. There's many different pots for different purposes. They may come from the core fund, or relief fund that the feds put out there, but they're broken up into many different things. And so, there's a purpose for each and every one, and it really ties back to our Heighten Up Plan. That's the plan that we're moving forward with, and we're utilizing these COVID dollars to not only just pay for the additional costs, but focusing on the Heighten Up Plan and the learning loss, or, as we like to say, more accelerated learning. The learning loss was more of a federal word for, term for this. So, examples of that are teacher supports, interventionists in the classroom, additional summer programming, we've heard a lot about retaining staff, keeping our class sizes lower, as we had declining enrollment caused by the pandemic, as many schools, most schools across districts, across the state did. That's a big financial impact. So, when you're trying to do more things, and you're losing revenues due to student enrollment loss, that was a hard thing to establish without this COVID funding. Additional support staff, there's additional things that we've had to do. Director Frye talked about the nurses, and mental health supports have been mentioned, social, emotional, indoor air quality projects, we're kicking those off, I'll talk about that a little bit more in a bit, obviously, personal protective equipment and sanitizing and cleaning. So, it's not in a complete list of everything, but it really is the main key points that are a focus in spending these dollars. So, that leads me to summer projects. I don't have a big, wonderful building rendering of a roof, I don't think that would be very exciting. But I wanted to let everybody know some of the bigger projects that we have going this summer, some of them are more impactful to the community than others. But we've been working over the last five years to catch up on roofs that haven't been done in many years and beyond their life expectancy. So, we have one more year of that. But this year, we're doing the West Wing of the high school. So, it's a very large building, and there's not enough funding to do it all in one year. So, we're picking away at that. One exciting project, as it relates to the indoor quality conversation with those COVID relief dollars, is the high school NCA gym and cafeteria. So, we have an HVAC project, we're replacing those units. They're, in general, pretty much original units to the building. So, as one can expect, they're going to be large projects, and we'll be working on those over the summer, and they will be completed by the start of school in August. We also have a pool project, we have a lot of pool programming that happens over the summer, traditionally. Actually, obviously, the pandemic put a dent in that a little bit, and just as we're gearing up, now there's some renovations that we need to do in the pool, we need to replace the main drain, we have some lights that are leaking in the pool that we want to do at the same time, and that's going to be a summer project. So, June through August, we'll be working on that, the pool will be closed. And we anticipate the first week in August, that pool opening back up. And of course, that's all dependent upon what they find when they start tearing it apart. So, we have a good plan, and we're trying to make the best of what we can with it, and do everything that we can with it, with the money we have, while we have it drained, because we have to do that main drain, that's a must. So, main gym floor, that's something that's been talked a lot about, we're very excited about it. It is original gym floor to our facility, so sixty years. And it is at and beyond its life expectancy, typically, a gym floor like this, you get around fifty years for, so we've exceeded that, thanks to the boosters for helping us in this project. So, boosters are donating a large amount of money, eighty-five thousand dollars, towards this project. We're also going to be replacing the bleachers in this project as well, that you can see in the background with the CH. So, I don't have renderings yet to show, I just have the old floor. We had a meeting last week, and they're working on the renderings now, so that we can take a look at them. And that project will start in this school year yet. So, in order to get this project done by the start of next school year, we need to start early. So, thankfully, our spring programming is not in the gym. So, we'll have to deal with PE classes and moving them to other gyms that we have in the facility, but we're very excited to kick that off in April. So, obviously, it's a space, we have a lot of programming in, so we want to get it back online as soon as possible. One of the biggest ones that affect people driving through and around the schools, they come to events, is the pavement project that we have this year. So, all the areas highlighted in yellow, we're resurfacing. And in the back of the building, along the tennis court there, you can see that that's highlighted, and we're actually going to create another entrance into the facility there. And that's the plan currently. So, this is early stages, but this is our current plan, so that our buses can be separated from our parents and drop-off here in the morning. It's very congested at drop-off and pickup time. Years ago, in 2014, we talked about, when we passed the Capitol Projects Levy, about separating parents and the buses during drop-off and pickup time. And we've done that at every facility but this one. So, we're looking at bringing the buses in, the drop-off, and they'll head right into the cafeteria from the back of the building, and then parents will still drop off and pick up at the front of the building as normal. So, that'll alleviate a lot of congestion, those bigger buses. We have many accidents in the horseshoe every year, buses backing up into people, because they can't see them, because they pull right behind them. So, separating them is good. It's good for safety.
Into cars, not into people.
Yes, in the car, sorry. Thank you for clarifying that. So, that's one of the more major projects for this summer, and that hopefully will go out to bid in March. So, we're still working on finalizing scope of that and drawings for that.
And before I start about our summer programming, I just want to express gratitude for the collaboration that our school district has with the city, with the rec department and the library, with Keith, and Renee, and Bree, when she was with us, and Katie. There's so many people that we are just simply representing, all of our colleagues that really think about all of the children, all of the families in the community, and how we can work cooperatively to serve our whole community. So, I just wanted to start off with gratitude about that. This summer, we have many programs. Brian was looking at me, and Xena and I were exchanging forlorn thoughts about aquatics, because of the pool being closed, because in the past, we've been able, throughout the school year and summer, to provide free swimming lessons for children. With our Twenty-First Century Grant, we even provided lifeguarding training for free for students. We know how important it is in a state that has so many bodies of water, to make sure that children can be safe around them. We'll pick that up again in the fall, but unfortunately, you won't hear about our aquatics program. We are doing Summer Adventure Club and Mini Adventures, that's our childcare program that takes place here in the family center. We're doing a second year of ECFE during the summer, with a real focus on nature-based programming outside. We are during this COVID time, but hopefully, going into the future, very comfortable with doing outside programming. And we're so fortunate to have Blooming Heights School Garden, which is right behind this building, and I hope that you visit if you haven't already. So, we have a nature-based ECFE class, a nature-based preschool class, and we're also going to go out into the community to the playgrounds and do ECFE programming there as well this summer. We're going to have a brand-new program, a nature-based kindergarten prep program. That's going to be two weeks at the end of June at North Park School for Innovation. We're really excited about how that will complement the programming during summer encore for our rising kindergarteners. Of course, a lot of Blooming Heights programming for children of all ages, and the rec program brings their little ones up and then have since Blooming Heights started, twelve years ago now, this summer, once a week to Blooming Heights programming. Of course, we'll continue with our adult enrichment and senior programs, and our adult basic ed program with Metro North at forty-one-eleven Central. I always have to put in a plug for where that's located. Many of the classes are virtual also, all of them are free, for adults that are working on their GED, learning English, or learning other skills. So, never a dull moment in this district, most certainly not during the summer. most certainly not during the summer. And I think that Director Takrol is going to speak about our Summer Encore program.
Yes. In addition to the list that Kristin shared, we have many other programs happening. We, ones that are not listed on here, we do host Summer Academy, which takes place in June. So we worked with Director Hennickens as we look at the construction happening and where they can be. We know that's a busy time. And then we also hosted our high school's credit recovery program. So those aren't listed on here, but two programs that are listed here are Summer Encore. This is our big program, that we've expanded even more, thanks to COVID funding to support learning acceleration. We're able to offer to students entering grade kindergarten, all the way up to students entering grade nine. So they will be split between North Park School for Innovation and Columbia Academy. And really, this is theme-based content with literacy. So we focus in on the academic skills, but students are enjoying, they're moving around, creating art, enjoying the nature outside, as Director Stunkel mentioned, really sparking that joy and having fun. It's a wonderful time to visit with our teachers who are smiling away, as well as our students, happy to be there together. And then a wonderful collaboration we have with St. Anthony New Brighton is our summer seminar. And this is a collaboration to provide multiple classes for Heights and St. Anthony students to learn and work together. And it's fun to see how they connect with each other. And throughout the year, we try to give them that opportunity to meet up again. I know in past years, pre-COVID, they were able to join each other's athletics or activities and cheer each other on. So it's been a wonderful collaboration for quite a few years that we've had with St. Anthony in the summer. And with that, there's some more programming from Dr. Frye.
Thank you, Director Takrol. Just part of that Encore programming is extended school year for students who are individual education programs. Those are embedded within Summer Encore programming, which is exciting, because students still have access to their general ed peers, and we get to also support students in Summer Encore who may not qualify for ESY, but still might need some support with accommodations, modifications, or just somebody they've got a relationship with. Another piece is recovery services, that is something that was passed in the legislature last June, as part of special ed programming due to the pandemic, or the impact of the pandemic on students, to determine if there's some recovery services around reading, math, functional skills, things like that. So we've got a handful of students who'll be continuing to provide services for over the summer. We're continuing to do that now with some programming, but the summer is going to be really our main focus for those services, to hopefully get those students back, recover some of those skills they lost. And finally, I'm excited about this probably the most, is that that increase to the mental health support. Last year, we had an opportunity to have two social workers support students during Summer Encore, and we're going to continue that this year. We're going to open it up to school psychologists as well, and kind of determine who's available, and kind of being very intentional with that support for our students, and hopefully have a continuation of that support from students who might have exhibited a need this year. The need hasn't gone away, we still need to support them. The other piece to that is Lee Carlson is continuing to be our schooling mental health partner, and they provide services over the summer, and we're going to continue to partner with them and support students connecting with Lee Carlson, so they still have that support. Because again, like I said, the need still is there, whether summer's here, whether school's in session or not. And Highlanders have heart.
One last thing, too. As a handout, that's at everyone's space, there's, and Director Stunkel, please feel free to chime in. There's a list of upcoming events yet this spring that span across the district. Do you want to?
And I will say that this is accurate as of this morning. Things have been ever-changing with the calendar, so I really encourage you to go on our website, because that calendar is always up to date. So before you get onto your bicycle or into a car to go to an event, just verify that it's still happening. And also, we have many programs with our activities and athletics, more than I could document on here. Please go to our website, if you'll see the calendar logo, you click on that, and then you'll see our calendars, and also the link to the activities and athletics calendar.
And so there's a lot of acronyms on here. So on the back is a legend to explain what the acronyms are. And then it even spans beyond the school year to next year for our homecoming week. We want to make sure to get the word out that that week of October 10 is going to be homecoming. So mark your calendars for the Friday football game, October 14.
Thank you. Any questions? A lot of information presented. Questions from anybody?
I have a question. I was wondering, this is, look, the partnership that the city, the county, and the school district did with the vaccines, I was just listening to NPR, and they were saying how we're only at, I want to say, 45% of people over 60 with their booster shot, and that people are not really signing up for their booster shots as they were for the double vaccine. And if that's something we can look at doing, bringing it, because people are having a hard time just taking that extra step to call their doctor to set it up. But I know we just had such a successful, you know, bout of doing the vaccine clinics here in the city, and people really loved that it was, everything was taken care of it for them, you know, with the fire department right there, too. It just felt like such a community gathering experience, not, well, now that you have to do it, you figure it out, you go to Cub Foods. You know, we were sort of taking care of our own. But I would love to see if that's possible to do that again.
Any other questions?
I would say for that, thanks for that question. And Director Frye really connects with county officials, Department of Health, and has been able to find multiple avenues for us to provide those vaccines and boosters. And so it's definitely something that we'll connect up on. Thanks.
Wonderful. Anything else? All right. Well, a couple things. I want to, can just, again, thank you all for coming from the city. I think on behalf of the board, we're glad that you're here. Mayor, did you, I should have done this at the beginning, when I welcomed everybody, give you an opportunity to add any additional comments or thoughts about our meeting today?
Oh, no, I just think it's, this is wonderful. We had, the city manager, Kelly, and Xena and I had a meeting, sort of, and Natty was there discussing, you know, what would we like to see from this, you know, how about this going forward? And I just think it's been, it was a great conversation then, and wonderful presentation to see what's happening with the school district. But thank you so much for hosting, and hopefully, we'll be doing the hosting next time.
After November, right?
A new building. That would be great.
Yeah, we would love a tour.
There's windows in that building now. I was driving, I live right up the street, and there were cars parked all the way up to Reservoir this morning.
Yeah.
So it must be you and the finisher.
The workers' numbers are going up because of that. And yes, finally, windows in our space, so we can start, they can enclose it, and then they can start doing the interior work on the condo space soon.
Wonderful. Well, yes, thank you again for coming and for joining all of us. And on a personal note, I have appreciated being the liaison to city council, and that's now Brenna, so you'll be seeing her if you haven't already. And I want to thank you for the hospitality that you have shown me at your meetings, and look forward to having you all continue to send your liaison to us as well, and keep that partnership up, so.
We also have a new liaison for this year as well, and it's Councilmember Nowitzki. So I think you were here last month, right, in January?
I didn't make it last month. We had just
Just on the switch.
Other meetings that night.
Okay. Great. We look forward to having you. Excellent.
We'll connect Brenna.
Yeah. Great. Well, thank you, everybody. With nothing further, we will adjourn the meeting at 6:32.